...org/summer-festival. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Rasha Goel. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. And a reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Council, today is Wednesday, August 26th. I am Nury Martinez, President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Sidiyo.
Present.
Aristosson.
Here.
Kuratz.
Here.
Krikorian.
Here.
Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rue. Wesson.
Here.
And going back, oh, and going back to Councilmember Buscaino? No? Thirteen members present in the court, Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the August 25th, uh, 2020 meetings minutes?
Okay, Mr. Lee moves and Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves and Mr. Krikorian seconds, next.
Madam President, would Council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that would be the order, next.
Item number one is an item notice for a public hearing. Items two through seventeen are items which public hearings have been held. For the record, corrected committee reports have been submitted for, and posted online for items three-
Sorry, guys, I'm here.
-three and nine. For the record, the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council submitted a community impact statement for item three. The corrected report for item nine includes recommendations for the city clerk and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment to report on matters such as neighborhood council election outreach and education, as well as efforts and costs associated with conducting neighborhood council elections via mail, online, and in person. And finally, community impact statements were submitted from the Empowerment Congress West Area Neighborhood Development Council and the Northridge East Neighborhood Council for item nine. Finally, the committee report for item number seventeen has been submitted and posted online for consideration. Items eighteen through twenty-nine are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Members, are there any specials? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call items seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and thirty special for remarks.
Okay, can you repeat those one more time? Seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-three, and which one was the last one?
And thirty.
And these are all for remarks?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuratz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call items two and ten special.
These are for comments, or are you introducing any amended motions?
Uh, no comments and questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bloomingfield?
Thank you. I'd like to call twenty-five special. I think just for comments, but I might have an amendment. Uh, I'm not sure. I'm trying to talk with EWDD about it. I have a concern about one of the criteria. But I know I have to state the amendment in advance, so I will, I will put it out there, but I may not offer this depending on the answers that we get. Specifically, I'm concerned about the weighting of the grant recipients by political jurisdiction. So my amendment, if I offer it, would be to remove the criteria that socioeconomic data composite score by Superhazardial and Council, and City Council District receive higher lottery ratings.
Okay, let's go ahead and get your questions answered when we get through that item.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Uh, if I could hold items nine and ten on the desk.
Do you, are you offering-
For remarks.
For remarks, thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Uh, no items for me, just, um, sorry for the delay. I just want to be-
Okay, we're just gonna go ahead for the record. Mr. Buscaino has joined our meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
All right, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on the following items. These, uh, items, public comment has been satisfied on items three through eight and items eleven through sixteen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Please. Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Price?
Yeah, I'd like to recuse myself from item eleven, please.
Let's go ahead, and, uh, Mr. Price has made a request to recuse himself from item eleven.
Thank you.
So we're gonna take a separate vote on item eleven. So let's go ahead and vote on items three through eight, eleven by itself, and twelve through sixteen.
Thank you, Madam President. So this vote, councilmembers, is for three through eight, twelve through sixteen.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Aristosson.
Yes.
Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to items twelve through sixteen. Please call the roll.
Madam President, that was the last vote. This would be, uh, item eleven, yes?
Yes.
Yes, excuse my error. Go ahead and, go ahead and call item eleven.
Madam President, Mr. Price requested to be recused from item eleven?
Yes, he's off the board. Go ahead.
Okay, perfect. For item eleven, Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Yes. My apologies, Sidiyo, aye.
Thank you, Councilmember Sidiyo. Kuratz.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Price is recused. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and move on to public comment. Why don't you go ahead and read the call-in information for those folks who want to call into our meeting today?
Yes, Madam President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Once admitted in the meeting, press star nine to speak. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466 and then press the pound key. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Mr. Sidiya Attorney, you want to go ahead and explain our speaking rules to the members of the public?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please take the items first and then general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. The items open for public comment are items one and items eighteen through twenty-nine. Item thirty is in the special hearing, or a special meeting, and we'll deal with that later. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off-topic, the President will cut you off and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and will move on to the next speaker. We'll take forty minutes total public comment. Finally, for members of the public calling in to speak, as soon as you hear someone address you, you are live in the council meeting. There's a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, and if you continue to listen on your other devices, it's gonna cause a lot of confusion. And again, the items that are open for public comment now are items one and eighteen through twenty-nine only.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning. Stuart Waldman, president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. I'm calling to speak on items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-eight.
You have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, for items twenty-five and twenty-six, providing childcare for essential workers and all workers is so important. As we're inching towards recovery, we support the council's efforts in making sure that people have a place to put their children in time of need. So we support that and hope you move forward with that. In regards to item twenty-eight, that requires a recording of when three or more employees test positive, we have some concerns there. Not all companies are created equal. A company with six people who have three or more employees who test positive is a little different than a company with twenty-five-hundred employees who test positive. We are concerned about violating CCPA and HIPAA. We are concerned about confidential health information. We want to make sure that anything that the city enacts is consistent with state guidance from June sixteenth. We're also concerned that as these are anonymous, as people can anonymously report, that the aggregate doesn't double count. We want to make sure that there are clear guidelines on where the data goes, that the data is protected, and how it is going to be purged at some point. And that's our main concerns on the issue as it currently stands. And that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
This is Mimi. I'd like to give general public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Because you voted for the inhumane continuation of tweets, people had to go down today to defend the homeless family roots. These tweets are expensive and don't fix the health problem. They cost around five carats a week, almost forty-five carats a day. Let's use that money to help people instead of hurting them. Also, while defending the houseless, Sabrina Johnson was hit by a truck, and when she chased the driver down, she was tackled by two men, each twice his size. She is five-three. The men were angry that she wanted to protect and house people from losing their belongings, and the cops sided with these men who attacked her. What the fuck is wrong with you all to let this happen? This is all of your fault. And don't roll your eyes and bitch that I'm cussing at you. I'm pissed off. Your actions get people hurt and killed. Stop the tweets. Get houses people on your committees. Do better. People die if you don't. Fuck you, especially those who think it's funny to talk shit on a hot mic after I cuss you out. Fuck you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is John Parks, and I'd like to speak on item number ten and offer public comment.
You have one minute for each. Go ahead.
Actually, Madam President, excuse me, Madam President, actually, we voted on, or item ten is we've already held the hearing, so we should just stick with general public comment. The speaker's perfectly welcome to talk on that item during general public comment if he wants, but not for an extra minute. So please go ahead, speaker. You have a minute.
All right, thank you so much. Good morning, council members. My name is John Parks. I'm here today to represent the Coalition for Economic Survival. CES fully supports item number ten. Our current heat wave has shown the right to air conditioning is not only about habitability, but is a public health issue. This motion will be instrumental in minimizing hospitalizations of tenants due to heat-related issues by allowing residents to install their own portable air conditioning units. More importantly, it will secure the units which already exist in apartments and prevent landlords' refusal to repair those existing units. There must be a quicker H-SID process to obtain repairs on those existing units. The health need of an AC unit is worth more to tenants than a reduction in rent, which is the standard when a landlord removes an existing unit. We must also eliminate the intent of using the removal of ACs as a tool of punishment or harassment. This is about the well-being of our neighbors and not about saving a few dollars on rent. In light of the immediate impact of climate change, we urge city council to adopt this motion to ensure the health, well-being, and safety of tenants in our city.
Thank you.
And as well, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Daniel Gussell, all items and general, please.
Okay, you go ahead. You have three minutes and your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Three plus one, got it. Item number twenty, I think you're shooting too low here. You should make it two-hundred thousand dollars is the threshold. That way, council members can have one percent of their income taken away, so it's a shared sacrifice. But what Mr. O'Farrell's really missing here is you're saying that it's over individuals with one million dollars. I propose we go even further off the deep end, Mr. O'Farrell. Why don't you make it a million dollars combined household income? Because if there's a husband, or whatever you want to define as a spouse, with a half-million-dollar income and a wife with a half-million-dollar income, they wouldn't be paying this one percent under this rule. I propose that you make it a one-million-dollar aggregate household income rather than for individuals. Let's see if the city's willing to do that. And I'm serious about that. You are shooting too low here. Aim higher. Item number twenty-one, now here's the problem is, I sympathize with your interest in helping transgender people who identify as women to be in female shelters. The problem is, what will be the impact of the women and children who live there? I sympathize with the goal, but I think you're underestimating the fact that this might keep a lot of women and minor children out of shelters with this item. So it's a good idea, but I think you're missing the side consequences. Number twenty-two, Mr. Sidio, please define the social justice class. It is not defined by the state. Ethnic studies is defined, social justice is not defined, and you shouldn't be passing these agenda items without defining a social justice class. Number twenty-four, this is a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Sidio. In the word of the late, great John Walsh, when I have something complimentary to say, I will be the first to say it. This expanding broadband infrastructure and low-income census blocks is a very good idea, very good idea, Gil Sidio. Item number twenty-eight, why are you waiting for it to be three positive cases? Why not one? If you're serious about stopping COVID, make sure that all cases are reported, all of them. Similarly, item number twenty-nine, another very good idea. So we have this telecommute thing going on because of COVID, but why not do it to help with traffic and other normal civic problems that we have in the city of L.A.? Mr. Rue, you know I'm a critic, but if I have something positive to say, as John Walsh always said, I will be the first to offer the compliment if there's a good idea. Number twenty-nine is a very good idea. And now for my general public comment.
Please go ahead.
Do I get my, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Council members, you have a hundred and thirty-three usable acres for homeless or low-income, long-term supportive housing, and it's called the Los Angeles Zoo. Why not save yourself millions and millions of dollars? Move all of the zoo's occupants to refuges and places where they can be freer than the artificial confines of the zoo. Move the city's zoo employees to other jobs in the city or in the county and build homeless housing to your heart's content on the hundred and thirty-three acres of the zoo. You won't have to worry about height restrictions because the zoo has no neighbor. It's conveniently located by the five and the one-thirty-four, so you'd be perfect that way. You could also keep out the riffraff of drugs and gangs and other afflictions hitting the homeless community. Why not close the zoo?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sержenko from People City Council and Sunrise Movement L.A. I'll just do my minute of public comment.
Go ahead. You have one minute.
Yeah, Streppen Fabel, like, I had a minute of public comment yesterday, and you cut me off randomly and didn't let, it's general public comment. I can talk about whatever I want during that minute, Streppen. I know you didn't leave your job at O'Melveny and Myers and be a fucking whipping boy for city council. So why don't you just chill over there, Streppen, and let people talk during general public comment? We all don't have a six-figure salary like you, and only our connection to power is calling in the city council. And then the next one is for Mitchell Farrell and Joe Buscaino. You guys should watch the video pinned at StreetWatch L.A.'s Twitter right now. Joe, your fucking red-ass face yelling that, "They're not sweeps!" There are fucking sweeps going on, bro, because there were people there this morning at six a.m. trying to block a sweep. You guys are going against the CDC guidelines against no sweeps. There are sweeps going on, Joe, and Mitch, and everyone else over there. There are sweeps. You are bad people. You're fucking liars. You're corrupt and liars, every single one of you. For standing up for this, it's a joke. It is a joke.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Rob Quan. I'd like to speak on item eighteen, nineteen, and general public comment.
Okay, you have two minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I just wanted to start by noting that for both this meeting and yesterday's meeting, there was no audio on the line for anybody calling in until public comment began, which is just not really practical and makes things a whole lot more difficult. Moving on to items eighteen and nineteen, these are mayoral appointees to area planning commissions, and I just think it's always interesting to see how little scrutiny these appointees ever get from our council when they come before them, and see how little oversight you have in this process and little involvement in actually vetting these projects publicly when they come before your various committees. Normally, I like to plug their names in the ethics database and see who's got what kind of connections, because as we all know, two-thirds of our mayor's appointees are either campaign donors or people who've endorsed him. But unfortunately, because you've underfunded the ethics commission, their database is down right now at the moment, I guess. So I can't do that. But moving on to my general public comment, I thought it'd be a good time, considering yesterday's events, to talk about my story of the time I crossed paths with Maury Golden last year. It really illustrated your city family and what kind of bullshit you can let get through. It happened about six months after his name was revealed as being at the center of the FBI investigation with Jose Rizar. I just finished one of the coldest meetings I've ever had with a council member's office, and as we were leaving the room, the staffer shouted, "Oh, my God, Maury," and ran off to give him a hug. And we never spoke with that staffer again because clearly somebody more important had walked into their space. This warm welcome came in contrast with the greeting we got earlier, where the staffer didn't even say hi, didn't give a handshake, simply pointed to a room and said, "We'll be meeting in there." And frankly, even though we were there to talk about ethics reform and all of the corruption in City Hall, they had zero interest in the conversation. It was the shortest one I've ever had. I think it just goes to show, to illustrate what kind of culture you have that has allowed corruption to proliferate. And I think it's really worth noting that both our current and former council presidents have repeatedly rejected opportunities to reform our well-being.
Robbie, want to move on to your general public comment?
I actually moved on to my general public comment earlier, so I'll leave some time for the rest of people to say hi to you. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Quan.
Bye-bye. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, council. It's Sylvester Annie, founder of the Love We Don't See nonprofit organization in Los Angeles. I'd like to make a public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
So yesterday, I called about getting to the root of systemic racism in our country and all the things that stem from it. Yesterday, I called on the council to publicly stand for amending the Thirteenth Amendment. If you're unfamiliar with it, it says that neither slavery nor indentured servitude shall exist within the United States except as punishment as a crime. And as we see today, that loophole has been exploited in impoverished communities that have been directly affected by systemic racism. And when we look at the criminal response in communities of color, we have to understand that they are not racial and that they are environmental, and that poverty, ignorance, social isolation, economic deprivation breed crime, whatever the racial group. And it's a torturous logic to use the tragic results of poverty as an argument to continue it and to continue criminalizing people. So when we talk about reformative and transformative justice and changes in our country, I would like the council to stand up and publicly call for the amendment of the Thirteenth Amendment.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, we're having a lot of trouble hearing you. Can you make your line clearer?
Hold on a minute. I can barely hear you.
I think we're gonna have to move on to the next speaker. It's garbled to the point where we can't hear it.
Are you there?
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Rachel Torres. I'm calling on item twenty-eight.
Great, you have a minute for the item. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, city council members. My name is Rachel Torres. I'm calling from the United Food and Commercial Workers, Local 770, calling in strong support for the motion for Councilman Wesson regarding transparency in the process of outbreaks on work sites. As many of you know, many essential workers have been serving courageously during this pandemic. We've had at least eleven-hundred members test positive for COVID-19. Six of our members and family members have died. And so we need more transparency in how our health and safety is being protected. This motion sets about achieving two main goals. Full transparency for workers when there's a COVID-19 outbreak. This is defined as from the L.A. County Health Department, as three or more workers testing positive within a two-week timeframe. We know that when workers know if they have tested positive or there are workers in their work site that have tested positive, they will go and get tested. This will help with quarantine.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Herman Herman, for the record, regarding items one through twenty-eight and special, and my one general public comment.
Mr. Herman, you can speak on items one and eighteen through twenty-nine now.
That's what I just got through saying, nigger.
You have three minutes and one minute for your general public comment. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I can count two. One plus one plus one, it's three plus one, it's four. Thank you, sir. Please do not interrupt my general public comment. Regarding the COVID on testing hippos, I mean HIPAA, yeah. State guidance is what we should follow. Data is not too important because, as you hear, we're still in a crisis of COVID. And public health issues are falsely reported as we pay seven-hundred dollars per test as Antonia, AKA Ramirez, was tested twice during an episode of Lhasa. That's three to one. No, we want.
I don't understand which item you're on. Would you please tell me the item and hook things up?
Well, I'm on item twenty-eight, going to twenty-one now. Women and children out of shelters. Now I'm on item twenty-two. Thank God for Sidio, social understanding. God bless Walsh for the truth behind Sidio's social understanding. Yes. What about you on item twenty-nine? What about you on item 29? Woo-hoo! "I will always be one to praise," says John Walsh, "as long as you don't cock me off." Now I want to go to my general public comment, Kant.
Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Regarding, regarding why we in the FBI are taking arms against tyrants of local government to fight against encroachment, rapid gentrification, because we want to preserve the issues, in part because of power that displaces low-income families and often prevent low-income families from living or moving into affordable neighborhoods like L.A., fucking Garcetti, you asshole, and displaced as cost of living increases, Mr. Jackass, Mr. Attorney, and San Francisco's Oakland camel of Kant Harris, another dumb bitch of the Democratic Party, look what Gavin Newsom's on, burn the state of California, and you're trying to burn the federal government for stealing federal state dollars for COVID-19, you fucking poverty pimps. Then, on item 3, urban development, low to high, rising rents, and living costs. Mommy, mommy! What are you gonna do?
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
This is Kate Corey, I'm calling to make a general public comment.
You have one minute, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm a resident of CD10, and I'm just calling to say that the council is entirely complicit in our homelessness crisis, and it's become very, very clear that you have very little intention to actually solve homelessness. The Bridge Homes are a complete disaster, so few people are making their way out of permanent housing, because to no one's surprise, very little permanent housing exists for people coming out of homelessness, and instead of using city money to actually house people in hotels or give rent vouchers or build from housing, you spend a whole lot of money on sweeps that make it incredibly difficult to survive while you're living on the street. And I know you guys don't like to call them sweeps, but that's what they are, and so either you've never been to one, or you're lying to your constituents, and honestly, the sweeps don't even make NIMBYs happy, so I don't really even understand the point. Your lack of action on homelessness is astounding, and I encourage you to stop harassing people who live on the street, and actually start housing homeless people. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
It's by, I wanted to talk on items 13 and public comment.
You have one minute for each, go ahead.
I'd like to talk about the homeless issue, because at the root of everything that we're facing today, poverty is at the root of it. You know, Dr. King, one of the last things he was championing was the Poor People's Campaign. That is what connects all of us, and if we are, if we're ever intending and planning on moving forward as a nation, then we have to, or even as a city, we have to take care of the least of us, the ones that are most disenfranchised, the ones that need the most assistance, not just to constituents that can support us financially, but the people who can't do anything for us. That's what shows our character, our morality, is how we take care of the people who can't do anything for us, and right now, we're failing those people. Earlier, it was brought up, the Thirteenth Amendment being a root cause of a lot of the systemic issues that we're facing today, and I'd like to know personally to attack that homelessness problem that we're dealing with and everything that stems from it.
Do you want to move on to your general public comment now, please?
Okay, great. I'd like to know, would the council support publicly calling for the amendment of the Thirteenth Amendment? Is this a forum to ask a question? Can we get a yes or a no, or can I get some type of responsive? I'm not gonna answer that right now.
During your public comment, we do not interact with what your comments that you're making, this is your time.
Okay, I appreciate that. So, I'd like you all to take time, Herb Weston, Nury Martinez, the whole council, to really look inside yourselves and think about, this is the opportunity for generational change that we have in front of us, let's not lose this moment, let's create that change, and let's do what we should have done in 1865, and finally, close that loophole up and not allow any loophole or exception for slavery in our country to be exploited in impoverished communities by overcriminalizing them. And that's all I have, and I hope you guys take that with you, and we make action on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Yes, what items do you want to speak on?
Sure, this is Elise Miallo for Prime Residential, I was gonna speak on item 10, but I guess that falls under general public comment.
Yeah, you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Sure. So, just wanted to spend the minute talking about the serious safety concerns that we have with the motion, and we wanted to express support for the amendments made to require reports back from DWP and DBS. First of all, we believe that adopting the motion as-is and allowing residents to install their own AC units is dangerous. As you know, there are different types of AC units, and I think the most obvious danger is reflected in installing a unit that could be placed outside a window, could fall on someone's head, and could obviously injure someone pretty badly. Secondly, the second major concern is with the electrical system, and as everyone knows, ACs use a lot of power, and so you could easily overwhelm a transformer, and could also cause fires. Beyond that, I think the overall concerns about power and energy consumption are also an issue. Landlords may not even have the capacity.
Thank you.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on items 23 through 28 and general public comment, please.
You have three minutes for all your items, and then your one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. With regard to item 20, I also would support lowering that threshold to include the salary level of councilmen, which would add to establishing the city's position on changing, on the hurdle, changing access for transgender people. I'd like to remind the council that transgender person with tech in Hollywood, and Jackie Lacy's office, which I know the county declined to take that case, but the city council has been silent itself on supporting transgender people in its own city, even when they get attacked, have heard a single even whisper from you guys on that regard.
Speaker, are you still there? I think we've lost the speaker.
Hello?
Yes, are you still there?
Oh, yes, yes. I must have cut out.
We're having trouble hearing you, Jim.
I just want to, general public comment. So, council has failed repeatedly on projects, on the own promises, it's made to homeless people, and lies to our faces about sweeps, especially the red faces of Joe Busciano, and it's just a shame for people to have to show up in the streets and have to provide the resources that the city could easily provide. And I think it's incumbent on all of us listening to, instead of wondering when the council will do their job, it's time for us to do our job and begin the process of recalling all of you, voting all of you out as quickly as possible, because you guys did not serve the city, you guys served your own egos and interests. Herb Weston and Karen Price, absolutely nobody will remember you for anything you do in the city, even if you get something named after you, or get Kobe Bryant Boulevard named after you, Marquis Harris Dawson, you're a sellout and that's all you'll ever be known for, Mike Bonin, you're an absolute fraud, Mitchell Farrell, you're a snitch or failure, and people die in your district every day, I haven't heard a single peep about the fact that Brianna Moore died from cancer.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, Michael Schilste with Central City Association, I'd like to comment on item 26.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
We're strongly supportive of the over $20 million allocation to support childcare in the city. The $10 million allocation for childcare vouchers and the additional $10.3 million appropriation for alternative learning centers at park facilities will be a lifeline for families and essential service workers in need. These measures will bring relief to families by providing affordable and safe care while allowing parents to keep earning wages. They'll also support the childcare industry, which has been greatly impacted by COVID-19 and is disproportionately represented by women and people of color. CCA recognizes the importance of childcare to building and stabilizing communities. We published a white paper earlier this year with recommendations for expanding opportunities to create childcare in school facilities in downtown L.A. and across the city. We know that this funding allocation is a short-term stopgap, and ultimately solving the puzzle of how to fund childcare is a long-term challenge. However, we're hopeful that we can build off of these creative programs in the future while they help families today. So, thank you.
Next speaker.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Rob Notoff, Policy Director with the L.A. County Federation of Labor, and I'd like to speak on item number 28 and potentially, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Wonderful. So, on behalf of the 800,000 working women and men of the Los Angeles Labor Movement, we strongly support item number 28. For us, it's a no-brainer, we all know the gravity of the moment that we're in, and while we know that we are, in fact, all in this together, we're not sharing the same experience. Black and brown communities continue to be disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, and essential workers are sharing a disproportionate share of the associated risk, as everybody now knows. If we're truly serious about flattening the curve of infection, as well as the curve of inequity, then we must centralize the workplace. Item 28 sets about achieving two main goals: full transparency for workers when there's a COVID-19 outbreak, and a process to address the outbreak through actions such as onsite testing. For us, we believe that workers deserve to know when there's an outbreak at the workplace, and to know that it's being addressed. Customers also deserve to know if there's a business that they're shopping at is or has been subject to an outbreak, and the communities in which these workers, customers, and businesses are located also deserve to know as well. So for us, this is a no-brainer, and we're proud to voice our strong support. Thank you.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on item 27 and all the items that are available, and a general public comment.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, please begin.
Thank you. So, I take note of item 27, which is a motion from, I think in March, from O'Farrell and someone else, and it's a good area relative to putting more things in service for people who are victims of domestic violence, including undocumented immigrants during this, what was the safer-at-home order. Now the safer home order is, I don't know if it's still in effect or not, I know people are wearing masks and doing various things, but I looked over the list, and I noted that this one is being authorized for H-SID under City Charter Section 371, which provides the exception from competitive bidding. So this is worrisome, obviously, because I don't quite understand how we would make a decision, we're just going to load up the firms that are already doing this work is one idea, but the capacity is not necessarily there, so it would have made sense to hear from other firms that have not made it on the city's list before. And I know peace over violence is in there, that is Patty Giggins, who's very close to the County Board of Supervisors, as you know, she's the civilian oversight commission over jails, and Alex Villanueva, who's got his own issues. So I don't know, this thing, I always balk when I see things, money doled out, this is only 1.17 million to the agencies that will help, and then another 3.7 million, or almost 3.8 million, and this is all under the category of Project Safe Haven. So, I don't know how that mix fits in with Project Room Key, since these are obviously comparable, but there's just a lot of money going out the door without any bidding, and just, it worries us. We've asked the mayor's office, can you please disclose the contract with Sportsman's Lodge and Studio City where they have several hundred beds for Project Room Key, but they won't, they haven't disclosed that, they're putting us through the PRA wait-around gag rather than showing the contract. The county said they don't have the contract, they said the city has the contract. So getting to my general public comment, if I think we're getting close to that, I just want to emphasize that this is, it's very upsetting that you approve sort of 17 or 15, 16 items without taking any comments in this COVID time, once you've cut back committee meetings. Because we, out in the public, notice when committee meetings don't happen, and things wind up on the agenda like, where you can only speak among them with 25, or 30, or 50, or sometimes 80 items, it's just not appropriate. And given how important it is now, more than ever, to be open and transparent, it just seems like the reduction in meetings is the reverse of what the public wants and needs. You've heard from so many articulate speakers today and other days, and yet, you seem to tune out, there's these miscalculations about the technology, which I can't imagine, can't imagine how anybody can look away from Herb Weston's constant reduction, and frankly, it's not just Herb Weston, it's you, Councilmember Martinez, you know what I'm talking about. Why are the city council who are facing FBI investigation allowed to virtually block public scrutiny?
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Over and over again.
Thanks. And just for the record, we did take public comment on the items 2 through 17, they were taken in committee, and per the Brown Act, we don't need to take it here again.
But you did, or you didn't?
We took public comment on those items at committee and satisfied the hearing requirement
Right, but that was in a loaded-up committee meeting that nobody knew about.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
I'd like to speak on all available items, please, and general public comment, please.
Sir, the available items are items number one and items 18 through 29.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. All my comments are in the backdrop of a corrupt, criminally insane, totally inept, self-serving criminal organization, the Los Angeles City Council. Item number 18 and item 19 as well, all items, all appointments by this mayor, corrupt Eric Garcetti, and should be disavowed. Along with Herb Weston, they have destroyed this city, turning it into a homeless encampment of corruption. All items, all appointments by this mayor should be canceled, totally across the board. This city council is corrupt, corrupt, corrupt. There is no other word for you. You are murdering people. Item 20, item 13, you throw in a transit-oriented, 100% affordable housing development, when you've given away and stolen via campaign contributions from the developers, 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 via Huizar, via criminally corrupt Herb Weston, you throw in through the HHH bond money, all that money has been stolen in exchange for your campaigns to be funded in perpetuity forever by developers. So item 13 is a drop in the bucket of nothing, 100% affordable housing, what about all the other developments? The one in Cracorian District?
So we actually took public comment on item 13, you're happy, you're welcome to talk about it in your general public comment, but for the...
Thank you, sir. Item 28, anyway, Herb Weston stole all the money. Item 28, it's probably a good idea that you do something about COVID-19, the testing of city employees, but what about all the people on the street? You've stolen all the money, you gave half the money to the police. Corruption up and down, up and down, there's nothing but corruption at Los Angeles City Council. Herb, Jose Huizar, am I in my general public comment now, sir?
Yes, sir, you have your one minute of general public comment left. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. If you could take that away, Herb Weston cut down all the general public comment, if you could take this away, you would. You disrespect the public totally and completely. If people know, I've spent countless trips down to L.A. City Council in person when there were meetings, you people look away, you don't engage... You people look away, you don't engage the public, you could care less. Public, look up vote trading. I keep saying, this is the root of Huizar and Wesson's corruption. Vote trading at Los Angeles City Council. Read the statistics and read the article. Vote trading, it's illegal. This is why they throw in, push through all the projects they want. Everybody votes for each other's project, no matter how destructive it is to the public. Vote trading, Los Angeles City Council, corrupt.
Thank you, sir. Members, that concludes public comment for our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, we're going to vote on the following items. Item 1, item 18 through 20, item 22, item 24, and items 26 through 29. Go ahead and call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Cracorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number 2. This was called special by Mr. Corretz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item raises a couple of interesting issues, and I think a number of us would like to see units used for short-term rentals return to the long-term rental market, especially at affordable rates. But what's unclear to me is, what is an unused Airbnb unit? Because by definition, Airbnb units are supposed to be the primary residence of the person renting it out, which would mean by definition it's used because somebody is already living there. So, if there are completely unused units that are available to be rented, then they're by definition illegal, I would think. And, so that's the question. Given the regulations we approved last year, why would there be any completely unused units where there's no host on the premises? I'm okay to go forward with asking for a report back on this, because I think the city would be well-served by having more units available to house our renters, but I think we need to address these and any other relevant questions in the report.
Mr. Corretz, are we requesting a report back?
I believe this item is a request for a report, if I'm not correct.
Did you make any additional requests?
Just that they answer that question, what's the definition of an unused unit? And can there legally be any unused units that are rented out for short-term rentals?
Okay, very well. That should be noted, and let's go ahead and call the roll on item number 2.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Buscaino, aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Yes.
Cracorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 9, called special by Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, colleagues, this item authorizes the city clerk to move forward with vote-by-mail elections for neighborhood councils beginning in March of next year. To be clear, the clerk needs authorization to move forward today in order to have enough time to prepare for the upcoming neighborhood council election. However, this does not prevent us from continuing this discussion on improving the system and expanding voting access, which is my goal and what the additional recommendations that came out of committee seeks to do. This was heard in committee, and we approved the clerk's report in addition to a series of additional recommendations that include requesting report backs on the development of a robust outreach strategy, particularly to those without a physical street address, those experiencing homelessness, and those with limited or no access to the internet. But, this is a citywide issue, and we all have active community members that will want to provide input on how these elections, neighborhood council elections, will take place. And I want to make sure that every member has an opportunity to weigh in. The committee's decision was based on the information that we have today, our current financial reality, and the uncertainty around where we will be in relation to COVID-19 in March of next year. The clerk and Don has currently presented the fact that they do not have the funding to do both a vote-by-mail and support in-person voting for all neighborhood councils. And while we're largely left with the choice of whether to move forward with vote-by-mail for neighborhood councils or in-person elections for neighborhood councils, I do have a couple of thoughts. For instance, if this body wanted, we could actually appropriate funding for both in-person voting and vote-by-mail. We could also postpone the 2021 neighborhood council elections to later that year or in 2022. I personally, I am not in support of this option, but it has been done before, and we have, and that is an option that we do have. And with that said, Holly and staff from the clerk's office, as well as Raquel and staff from Don are available if anyone has any questions or suggestions to add to the committee's recommendations. Thank you, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, item number 9. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Cracorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
14 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number 10. This was called special by Mr. Corretz and Mr. Rue. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have some clarifying questions that I'd like to ask for the report back to cover. Is air conditioning considered a habitability requirement by state law? How do other local cities handle the issue of tenants installing air conditioning? Can some or most of the issues related to tenant installation be subject to provisions of a lease? And in terms of determining who should be responsible for maintenance and repairs of the air conditioning, if it's installed as opposed to portable, does it become an amenity that the landlord is responsible for? So, if we could ask those questions along with the other issues that the report back will handle, that would be great.
Okay, so you want to add these questions to the report back?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, just make sure your staff communicates that as well with the department. Thank you. Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for those questions, Councilmember Corretz. Because, colleagues, we are facing unprecedented heat waves at a time when access to indoor air-conditioned spaces have become severely limited due to the pandemic. When we ask people to shelter at home, we have to make sure that it's safe for them to do so. So, as Councilmember Corretz was asking, you know, why are heaters treated as urgent repairs but air conditioners are not, especially in this new normal of heat waves? As many of you know, this is an equity issue. Too often, it's seniors, communities of color, and low-income residents who lack air conditioning and face severe health outcomes as temperatures continue to rise. We all know that low-income neighborhoods and previously redlined neighborhoods are several degrees warmer than wealthier and whiter neighborhoods. When we, we need to be thinking of these residents and the needs that they face when it comes to keeping people safe and healthy at their homes. So, this is why I urge an aye vote today. Thank you, colleagues.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Go ahead and call the roll on item number 10.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cracorian is recused. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
13 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 17. This was called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the ordinance to limit third-party delivery app services and the continuation of that ordinance. Colleagues, local restaurants were impacted by exorbitant delivery app fees long before the pandemic struck, and in recent years, the use of delivery apps have monopolized delivery services for most restaurants. There is little or no profit generated as a result of this monopoly. What is considered the price of doing business can help grow a customer base through marketing or help keep regular customers loyal by delivering delicious meals to their homes. This trade-off has been worth it because most income for restaurants has traditionally been generated when customers dine in. Then came COVID-19. The pandemic laid bare the vulnerabilities of restaurants having to rely on delivery app services because restaurants went from having a fraction of their sales for delivery to as much as 95% of their sales for delivery, making them even more reliant on these services and completely at the mercy of these third-party delivery apps. What hasn't changed is the restaurant's inability to turn a profit on delivery services when using an app. However, this council stepped in. In early June, we approved an emergency ordinance to limit the delivery app fees to no more than 15% per order and no more than 5% for non-food delivery services to any restaurant establishment. It's important to remember that delivery apps are funded by venture capital investors in the hundreds of millions of dollars. Their individual net worths are in the billions of dollars. Out of the four delivery apps that have the biggest collective market share, two of them are publicly traded, and the other two have filed for their initial public offering. Increased sales and revenue drive up the market share, and by extension, their stock price and their investors demand a higher rate of return. Society benefits from innovative technologies traded on the stock market, but only if there are checks and balances. Our emergency ordinance has helped level the playing field, and this needs to continue. According to Yelp, to an economic impact report from last month, 60% of restaurants that have temporarily closed because of COVID-19 have closed permanently. To understand the impact of the ordinance, EWD and the CLA conducted a survey with results that overwhelmingly support the continuation of this ordinance. Of the restaurants surveyed, nearly 73% reported that the ordinance has been beneficial during COVID-19, and about 95% of restaurants reported that they would like the ordinance to be extended past next week, August 31st. It expires. Keep in mind that State Penal Code, Section 396, addresses price gouging during local, state, and federal emergencies. That is a crime. Violations can result in criminal prosecution. Restaurants still need us. This is still about local interests over Wall Street interests, and the action to extend this ordinance could very well ensure that our favorite local restaurants, the ones that are remaining, can survive this pandemic. Alternatives like the L.A. Al Fresco Dining are another critical tool to benefit some, but not all, restaurant operations. We've heard firsthand about restaurants that don't have the possible infrastructure or resources to implement this. Restaurants need as many options as possible to help get them through this difficult time. And by continuing the ordinance until the emergency order due to COVID-19 lifts, we can do our part to provide some help and hope of survival for our locally-owned restaurants. I would like to thank the Economic Development Committee and especially its Chair, Karen Price, for approving the necessary modifications to the ordinance yesterday. By continuing the 15% delivery cap, the separate 5% cap on non-delivery fees to restaurants, and the 100% of the customer tips going to the delivery persons who work for the apps, we can provide a level of continued relief that our restaurants need until the emergency order is lifted, and businesses can safely and fully reopen at 100% of their dining-room capacity. Members, I ask for an aye vote to continue this very important ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's prepare to vote on item 17. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretz.
Aye.
Cracorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
14 ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item 21, called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you again, Madam President. So, item 21 is in relation to a HUD rule change, removing protections for the transgender community especially. This HUD rule change is another Trump act of overt discrimination. Original equal access rule was installed by President Obama and his administration in 2016, which required all HUD-funded housing services to be provided without discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity. This is from HUD's own website. The new rule from 2016 allows shelter providers that lawfully operate as single-sex and sex-segregated facilities to voluntarily establish a policy that will govern admissions, determinations, or situations when an individual's gender identity does not match their biological sex. So, what am I against in bringing this before the council for a position? This rule change will result in the most vulnerable people, mostly trans women, from receiving the services that they so desperately need. It will mean further marginalization of the LGBTQ community, especially the trans community. And it's worth noting that the L.A. Transgender Advisory Council, which has been advising the city council and my office on this and other issues, have weighed in, and I want to thank you, thank the TAC for their constant partnership and especially... want to thank you, uh, thank the TAC, uh, for their constant partnership and especially, uh, Karina Somala. And I hope we can stand in unison against overt discrimination, uh, by the Donald Trump administration through our Housing and Urban Development Department. For that, I ask for an "aye" vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's prepare to vote on this item, item 21.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian. Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson. Going back to Councilmember Corin.
Aye.
Councilmember Wesson. Thirteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Wesson, aye.
Correction. Fourteen ayes, the item is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to item 23, also called special by Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues, for bearing with me here. This is another resolution in support of House Resolution 7197. It's the, um, Unique Restaurant Assistance Survival Act of 2020. Um, and we just talked about how restaurants need assistance. Uh, I want to commend, uh, the House for introducing this resolution earlier, and we need to, uh, support this as well. It's, uh, $120 billion for the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, uh, for food service and drinking establishments. Uh, this bill is needed because restaurants, as I just talked about, are hardest hit. Uh, gateways into many cultures, uh, restaurants say a lot about the, the culture of an international city or any city, anywhere for that matter. Uh, and Los Angeles, uh, has traditionally built up one of the more robust, um, culinary destinations in the world. Uh, and so, we want to support this. We know that our restaurants, uh, need the help. Um, it'll focus initially on marginalized and underrepresented communities, uh, with a focus and, uh, initial priority, starting with businesses with an annual revenue of under $1.5 million. So, there's also a real strong social equity, uh, component to this bill, and it's a good bill, and I hope that you all will join me in, uh, supporting this, uh, House bill resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, item 23. Please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidio.
Sidio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, item is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 25. This was called special by Mr. Bloomingfield.
Great, thank you. First, I want to say this is, this is, uh, I strongly support this item, and I want to thank Council President and the members of the, of the COVID Committee for bringing these, uh, critical measures forward to, to be able to give funding for, uh, businesses that are in need. Childcare assistance, really important. It's outside of our usual jurisdictional, uh, realm as a city, but this is an emergency, and we, and we're stepping in to do these things. So, I'm a hundred percent behind, uh, this item. I have one question, though, and, and a concern, and I may want to remove one of the criteria on the business grant, because, uh, I agree with the concept that's being promoted here, which is that the areas of the greatest need should have the greatest advantage in terms of being able to get, uh, access to these business loans. So, when we talk about low-income, moderate communities having an advantage in the lottery system, that makes sense. When we talk about the Calenviron screen, uh, that makes sense. Even when, when we talk about, um, income and poverty, education rates, that all makes sense to, um, to advantage folks who are in that situation and communities in that situation. But where I'm concerned is the last criteria waits the grant recipient based on political jurisdiction, based on which council district you happen to live in. And that seems like a slippery slope I don't think we should go down. Um, so, I wanted to get EWDD's understanding, talk to them about why they, why we're including a political jurisdiction as a criteria. And I know that, um, some political, some council districts are more disadvantaged than others, and I get that, and, and I want to make sure that the folks in those districts are getting the advantages. But the result is that you can have two, two communities right next to each other, and one just has the unfortunate advantage of being in a district that has wealth in another part of it, and another, another business could be right next door, but the, the political jurisdiction line goes down the middle, and they're going to be, um, disadvantaged. And that, that doesn't make sense to me, especially when you look at the way the political lines have been drawn. You have districts with Sherman Oaks and Koreatown are the same district, and, uh, you know, why should someone in, in Sherman Oaks have an advantage because they happen to be in a district with, with, that's disadvantaged way on the other side of the city? So, that's my concern, and, uh, I, I'm open to being convinced that, that this is a worthwhile criteria, but I don't see it right now. And I had a brief conversation with Carolyn prior to this, uh, when I discovered this criteria, but I've not been convinced on it, but I wanted to give her a chance to talk about it in front of all of you and hear, hear your thoughts on it as well, because I do think this is, it's not just about awaited, you know, getting a little bit more lottery tickets for a business grant. It is a precedent that we would be setting, uh, that I don't think is a good one. So, uh, with that, if EWDD wants to come to the table to, to shed further light on this, uh, that would be great.
All right, Mr. Bloomingfield, we're, we're putting the, um, General Manager, um, we're trying to get her into our meeting, so if you just hold on for just a second. Mr. Bonin, did you have questions of the General Manager as well?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, I could ask it now, and then when she comes on, she can answer.
Okay, we'll, we'll get, I'll come back to you as soon as we can get her on, on,
Okay, thanks.
into our meeting. Thank you.
Hello, this is Carolyn Hall. Can you hear me?
Yes, this is Carolyn.
Hold on for just a second, Carolyn. We're seeing, um, the audio's a little off inside council chambers. Give us, give us a minute. Hold on.
Happily, thank you.
All right, we have with us our General Manager. Um, Ms. Hall, do you want to go ahead and answer Mr. Bloomingfield's questions, and then Mr. Bonin has questions for you as well?
Sure. I, I, unfortunately, I wasn't on, um, so, Councilman Bloomingfield, could you repeat your question?
Okay, so why don't we have Mr. Bloomingfield go ahead and repeat your questions, and then I'll...
Sure, Carolyn, and it's an extension of the conversation that we, we had earlier. I, I don't understand why a political jurisdiction is a, uh, a wait, you know, is a weighted consideration for, uh, these grant recipients. And, and I use the example of, you know, like Canoga Park and Reseda in my district, which I know would qualify for some of these grants, but, which is great, but they're going to have less of a chance, they're going to have fewer lottery tickets, if you will, than a community right next door, uh, to them, not because they're any less in need, but simply because the political lines were drawn in a certain way.
That, that's an excellent question, and, and I want to start off by saying that our real goal of the whole program was to actually have an equity lens, to provide an opportunity for those businesses and nonprofits throughout the city that have been left out of other federal funds to actually have a higher opportunity. So, for the example in your district is a great example, because as we went through the indicators, and let me just start off by saying, these indicators were brought together with a group of researchers through list, group of mathematicians and professors to, and run models so that we could actually maximize the equity lens through, across the city. Uh, and so, we, there are two opportunities. If you're in a low-to-moderate-income census tract, it would, whatever your jurisdiction is, you have a higher probability of getting the tickets in the lottery. That's one lens. And then, if you're in a jurisdiction that has a higher number of census tract that are impoverished and that have those socioeconomic indicators that we are looking at, such as poverty rate and other items, you again then have another higher opportunity to be chosen if you're an entity within that district. So, the, so to your point, Canoga Park would absolutely, and, and your district will be represented, as is every district across the city. But in doing this program, we wanted to have an equity lens, particularly for those areas and businesses and nonprofits that have been left out of a larger pool.
Well, the whole thing is an equity lens, and I'm, and I'm, as I said, I want to reemphasize, I, I'm good with that equity lens. I think that it, this is, this is the way we should be going, and, uh, I want to see this equity lens applied in a lot of different arena. I just, I, my concern is the use of the political district as the, as the region, uh, as opposed to another, you know, more sensible region, you know? Politic, the political lines are very arbitrary. So, I guess if we eliminated that, that, um, extra lottery ticket, we would still have an equity lens, because all of the other criteria are very equity lens-focused, would we not?
We would. However, the, the indicators work in tandem with each other, just like any kind of optimized math equation. It's not that if we took one variable out, it's not like saying, oh, we can take that variable out. We actually, as a team, modeled the various indicators so we could absolutely optimize the equity lens across the city, no matter what jurisdiction, that we use the jurisdictional lines that, so that there is actually a boundary, and so, to, to ensure that there's equity across the city. So, if we actually were to take that out, we would have to, as a team, go back and not just say, we're not using that indicator. We would now have to look at what are the optimal set of indicators that create the equity lens that we're trying to achieve.
Well, you'd still have all the other ones there that, that you've identified. It's not like that would go away.
No, they wouldn't, but, but we would have to actually, like we did previously to get to those indicators, we'd want to go back and actually see what, not just theoretically what the outcome would be, but what the impact is, because now, we, we would want to see what the impact is to taking out that variable. When we've actually modeled it, this currently shows that there is equity across the city, particularly for those low and moderate income census tracts in areas.
Right, which, which we want to, we want to weight on the, on the census tract area. That, those, that makes sense. It's just the political lines that don't. But I'll, I'll, I'll open it up to colleagues who have questions or concerns on the same topic, so, thank you.
Okay, let me take Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, uh, and, uh, thank you, Carolyn, for the, the responses to Mr. Bloomingfield's questions, uh, which, which prompted a, a couple of my own. I, I share the concern about the, the, I don't actually share a concern about using a piece of political geography as a, as a metric. I, I do have a bit of a concern about using one so large. Uh, you know, it, it, it takes people or, or, or businesses, uh, that otherwise meet low-income criteria, uh, in, in, in my district, and they get disadvantaged by the fact that there are wealthier areas around them. Uh, you know, the impact of having a, a, a Brentwood and Palisades in a district, uh, changes the equation for, uh, a, a, a small business in Delray, right outside of Marvista Gardens, for instance. Uh, so, I, 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 I share that, 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 that concern. Share, share absolutely the goal of equity, just want to make sure that somebody doesn't get left out. Did we just lose Carolyn? I lost her on my screen.
Yeah, we lost her. Hold on, let's, let's bring her back.
I'd say, Mike, that that's the exact point that I was making about my district, what you're saying about yours, which is I've got Canoga Park and Reseda that are...
Hold on, Mr. Bloomingfield, hold on for just a second.
...better disadvantaged because they're, they're close to Woodland Hills on, you know, in the same district as, as other areas.
Okay, I think we got her back. Ms. Hall, are you there? Okay, she's here. Can you hear us? It appears she's in the meeting. I don't, I just don't think she can hear us, or we definitely can't hear her. So, it appears that she has a bad internet connection, so we're trying to get her on the line, as opposed to video.
So I have a lot of small business owners in my district, particularly restaurants, that do not live in my district, but that own a business there. I'm, I'm thinking of a particularly favorite restaurant of mine where the, the family that owns it lives either in CD eight or in CD nine, I can't remember exactly. They recently operated a, a food truck on Crunchaw and opened a, a, a sit-down restaurant shortly before COVID. They do not live in my district. They live in a district that would have a very different composite score. And most of their employees also live in districts that would have a, a different composite score than, than CD 11. Are they going to be evaluated based on the location of the restaurant or based on where they are from or where the bulk of their employees are from?
Excellent question. We are basing this and on the location of the business because it, it is that the address that has the business tax certification. So it is the address of the business, not the address of the, the owner or where the owner or the residents live.
So they, they may otherwise qualify in, in every other means, but they, they, they get dinged or disadvantaged in this process because they are doing business in a, a different part of the city?
Well, we are basing it on the location of, of the bit, small business.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. That's just, just what I wanted to clarify. That's what my concern was because I, they're, they're as, as disadvantaged as anybody else in the pool, they just, they just get dinged in, in the process because of where the business is, even though they are from a community and they employ people from the disadvantaged community.
But I do want to emphasize the program is citywide. And while there is an, an, a lottery or, or an extra weight given to those indicators, it is open up and the entire city will be eligible and will be represented. So yes, in the waiting system, we are waiting those communities that have not had the opportunity to take advantage of other federal programs or had statistically shown that they have not been able to do so. But overall, what we strive to do through our equity lens is to make sure that all parts of the city and all small businesses who all have been impacted have an opportunity, are part of the lottery system and will be provided funding. So it isn't, it is an attempt by all parties to have that equity lens that's across the board that covers the entire city.
Thanks, Madam President.
Mr. Gakkorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Hall. And I have absolute confidence in your ability to administer this program in a way that ensures that all of it is, is seen through an equity lens. I share some of Mr. Blumenfield's concerns about how it's weighted, and especially because we include supervisory districts as part of the report. Virtually the entire San Fernando Valley is represented in the Board of Supervisors by Sheila Kewell, who also represents Malibu and Bel Air and Beverly Hills and Pacific Palisades and most of Mr. Bonin's district and Mr. Coretta's district, which means that a business in Van Nuys or North Hollywood or Pacoima or Sunland is, well, not Sunland, but, but most of, of the San Fernando Valley is going to be adversely impacted by the fact that they happen to be represented by a supervisor who represents the wealthiest parts of the United States of America. And, and, and to me, that just, that just does not achieve equity when you're looking at it.
Right.
From a supervisory district perspective.
I, and I, I only put that in because there's two processes going on. Again, this is a regional fund. So the, so the, the process on the supervisors district is being handled, we're, we're running it through the lens of the city. And our city funds are, are being explicitly analyzed and run through a city lens. The county is just, it was just to, to point out that the same criteria is being used at the county elements and, uh, above the county districts because again, this is a regional fund where the city and county are collaborating. But to your point, again, through the process, those census tracts within the district that meet the LMI categories will have a higher weighting. So those areas that you just mentioned, like Pacoima, those areas actually will have a higher rating or lottery ticket relative to another community or census tract that does not have that LMI characteristics. So again, looking through it through an equity lens, I didn't mean to confuse people on this, it's just because they're part of this team and this effort.
Yeah. And, and I think as Mr. Blumenfield said, those, since those factors are already built into this, I, it seems not only redundant but counterproductive to include the political jurisdictions in this because the eligibility, the equity lens should be dictated by the neighborhood and by the business and its community, not by who happens to be the council member for that business or the supervisor for that business.
Well, it's not exactly, that, that, that's an excellent point, and it's not the council member. That composite score is really saying if you have six census tracts that are meet the LMI category, then you have a higher weighting than those that would have five census tracts that are, that are an LMI community or meet those characteristics. It is just giving higher weighting to those communities that have been left out of other types of federal funding. It does not mean that the other communities and other jurisdictions are not receiving funding.
I, I get that, I get that it doesn't exclude them, but it disadvantages them. That in, in the poorest district, the poorest communities of my district, which are extremely poor and extremely disadvantaged and extremely ridden by crime and have every other, you know, Calenviro score and other factor as any other neighborhood in the city, which is deeply disadvantaged, they are not going to be treated equitably with other similarly situated neighborhoods because I also happen to represent Studio City. And that, to me, that just does not produce equity when you, when you factor it in by, by council districts. So I, I, I just don't see what it adds. And I see a great deal that it contorts and convolutes because of the addition of political considerations. And, and I, I just, to me, that doesn't seem right. So I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that for now. And I, I think one thing that the report does not indicate is to what degree each of these factors is going to be weighted. I hope that this council can kind of provide guidance that if that political consideration is to be included, it should be the least weighted factor and low and moderate income and Calenviro score should be much higher weighted than any political consideration.
I can look forward back on that. That's a good point, and, and I can look forward back on it.
Okay. And then my, my final point, and this is a, a smaller kind of technical one, but I did notice that the technical advisors are set aside as a separate category for the business grants for $100,000 each, and they're part of this sort of lottery system. And when we did the Small Business Enterprise Loan Program, we initiated technical advice as part of that program as well. But it seems to me that they should be contracted parties to provide, that the city is providing funding for, to deliver a benefit, which is the technical advice to the business community that needs that technical advice. Including them in the grant program just kind of makes it a lottery and it doesn't result in any, any guarantee that the technical advice is in fact being delivered to the, the businesses that need it.
We absolutely agree. When we, when we were writing the report initially, we were working with philanthropy. I'm happy to report that philanthropy has assisted us and they have provided funding for technical assistance. And I was going to report back, and we can certainly do it here, that that two percentage points are going to be redistributed. As, as you know, Council, we have been building the plane as we've been flying it.
We all are. That's terrific. That, no, that's great news. So that's more money that can then be used to distribute among the, the businesses and the, and the nonprofits. That's great. Okay.
That's true. How the technical, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Carolyn. I, actually, the question that Mr. Gakkorian asked was my question is, what is that weighting? We see the, you know, we, we know about the, the inclusion of Calenviro screen and the socioeconomic conditions of that census tract, but understanding the weighting between amongst all of those varying factors is going to be helpful for us to better understand what this looks like. But with respect to the geography, true equity and the way we achieve equity is to create the infusion of resources in areas that collectively have a disproportionate collection of lower socioeconomic areas that have been underinvested. That is actually how we achieve, achieve true equity, is prioritizing those areas and funding them and supporting them when they have historically been left behind. So I can appreciate many of our districts and I, I can appreciate what some of my colleagues are, are experiencing, but when you look at communities like ours in Pacoima, Silmar, where we have a, a series of clusters of, of census tracts that would be qualified, then there you see the geogra, the geographic value and benefit to actually helping to provide true equity in this circumstance. So, so I'm okay with that. I, I can appreciate the impacts for other areas, but when you talk about the collection of census tracts that, in many cases, and if you look at, I know Mr. Sidiyo's district, Mr. Price, those are districts that have large numbers of census tracts that would be eligible and, you know, would not have the same impacts as described by Mr. Gakkorian or, or Mr. Blumenfield. And while I can appreciate that, that's, that's how we, I think, achieve true equity given the circumstances for these council districts. But, but I would like to know what the formula is in terms of the weighting amongst all those different criterias because I think that would be helpful for everyone to know when we're, when we're discussing this item.
I, I, I will report back on that. Happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I appreciate the comments that the colleagues have made, but quite frankly, I am excited that we have an equity lens. When was the last time we had something like this? You know, the, the fact that we've hired a team of experts, such as matter, experts to come up with a, a, a plan, a formula, I think is noteworthy. I think it's worth following through on. In fact, districts like mine, businesses are typically left out, you know, the first couple of rounds of funding. I think the numbers showed that the businesses in CD nine were, you know, were nowhere to be found. These are the businesses we're trying to help. So I think as a, as a start, it, it makes sense. The effort is to provide access and resources to those areas that have been traditionally underserved. I certainly lament the fact that some of my colleagues have wealth in their areas and poverty. You know, I, I, I don't have, I don't have that option. But I do think it's important that we provide these resources in ways that we have not done before. This equity lens, I think, provides a chance to do that, and I hope we can follow through with it. So I'm totally supportive of this approach, and I'm excited to, to work with my colleagues to make sure that, that, that all of our businesses, especially those underserved businesses, will be served properly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Sidiyo?
Let me add my voice and, and be very clear about my commitment both to equity and affirmative action. Some people will be positioned to receive more because they deserve it and because they need it. And there's a whole range of criteria that's been laid out, and political jurisdiction just happens to be one of them. Not all things are equal. So if you have a zip code that abuts Beverly Hills, it's different than a zip code that abuts Huntington Park. So it's a real distinction. Our districts are really distinct, and we need to recognize that. And they're distinct as political jurisdictions as well. So as Ms. Rodriguez stated, my district is 90% renters. We have 10,000 cases of COVID. We have 416 deaths. We have density of Manhattan. And these factors matter because it's, it's the aggregate that matters as well in terms of a community. And so in CD one, it means something to have 90% all renters, 90% of population are renters. It's a big distinction. It impacts disposable income. What does it mean when you're in a rich district? It means you have banks in your neighborhood, not micro lending institutions. It means that you have supermarkets that are available in your neighborhood and not convenience stores. It means that the police treat you differently. It means that the resources in your district for libraries and schools are different. It means redlining doesn't occur. Those factors have an impact on economic investment. And so if I'm looking to make an investment and I look at a zip code and it happens to be in the rich side of the area but the poorer part of it, I'm still looking at that zip code. And so it's a factor. These things matter. Location matters. And so in the first district, I'm advocating for us to get a greater opportunity because we have a greater, if not the greatest, need. And so I'm not shy about that. There are advantages and disadvantages. I would weigh those in my district such that I believe that districts like my, mine and others that have been noted deserve greater opportunity because they have been disadvantaged. It's real. It's part of the political demarcations that exist in the city. That's a reality and the time for us to deal with it. It's now, I'm very satisfied to see that we've got metrics now that are being utilized so that we can get opportunities where it's of greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidiyo. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for calling this special. And I appreciate all the comments that have been made. I think it's a rich and invigorating.
Let me add my voice and be very clear about my commitment both to equity and affirmative action. Some people will be positioned to receive more because they deserve it and because they need it. And there's a whole range of criteria that's been laid out, and political jurisdiction just happens to be one of them. Not all things are equal. So if you have a zip code that abuts Beverly Hills, it's different than a zip code that abuts Huntington Park. So it's a real distinction. Our districts are really distinct, and we need to recognize that. And they're distinct as political jurisdictions as well. So as Ms. Rodriguez stated, my district is 90% renters. We have 10,000 cases of COVID. We have 416 deaths. We have density of Manhattan. And these factors matter because it's the aggregate that matters as well in terms of a community. And so in CD1, it means something to have 90% all renters, 90% of population are renters. It's a big distinction. It impacts disposable income. What does it mean when you're in a rich district? It means you have banks in your neighborhood, not micro lending institutions. It means that you have supermarkets that are available in your neighborhood and not convenience stores. It means that the police treat you differently. It means that the resources in your district for libraries and schools are different. It means redlining doesn't occur. Those factors have an impact on economic investment. And so if I'm looking to make an investment, and I look at a zip code, and it happens to be in the rich side of the area but the poorer part of it, I'm still looking at that zip code. And so it's a factor. These things matter. Location matters. And so in the first district, I'm advocating for us to get a greater opportunity because we have a greater, if not the greatest, need. And so I'm not shy about that. There are advantages and disadvantages. I would weigh those in my district, such that I believe that districts like mine and others that have been noted deserve greater opportunity because they have been disadvantaged. It's real. It's part of the political demarcations that exist in the city. That's a reality, and the time for us to deal with it. Now, I'm very satisfied to see that we've got metrics now that are being utilized so that we can get opportunities where it's of greatest need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidiyo. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for calling this special, and I appreciate all the comments that have been made. I think it's a rich and invigorating discussion that can help us on a lot of other issues. I have a couple of questions and then a few comments for Ms. Hall, because I think Ms. Hall is one of the smartest people on these types of topics and has spent a long time looking at them. Can you talk some about this concept that I think Mr. Sidiyo was getting at of compounded poverty? That, you know, it's very different to look at an individual or even an individual census tract without looking at the context in which they're, the context of the economy around them. Could you talk some about the importance of that? And then my second question, Ms. Hall, is about the CAL and Viro screen. I actually have some concerns about the CAL and Viro screen. There are things that it counts and then things it does not count. Like, it doesn't count the number of kids in foster care. It doesn't count incarceration in a specific census tract. It doesn't count the number of people on public assistance. It doesn't count things like intergenerational wealth in a given census tract. And so some of the ratings that I've seen on CAL and Viro screen, for instance, divide, if you look at it, what it does is it divides my district in terms of race. It divides the brown neighborhoods from the black neighborhoods, which, you know, is curious. So what are your opinion about compounded poverty and then geographic poverty, and then your, any opinions you might have about the CAL and Viro screens and how you might address some of the concerns?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmen. Those are excellent questions. And the compounded poverty and all these other social indicators play itself out in the fact that we see unemployment rate for those individuals who are African-American and Latina being much higher than the general population. As you look at all these indicators, they play itself out in the fact that businesses that are owned by people of color have a lower cash reserve. It plays itself out in the fact that they have lower educational payment in these communities, which then plays itself into intergenerational wealth. So what we're trying to do in this process is, again, try to provide that financial support for those areas that has historically shown that these indicators compound themselves into lower family and intergenerational wealth, higher unemployment rate, and higher health indicators as well. So the compounding nature of these social indicators play itself out in a number of ways. And when we had programs that are first come, first served, what we found it was skewed the other way. We had communities in these low to moderate income areas that were not being represented. So in doing it and using these indicators, we are truly trying to have that equity lens that provides additional support to those communities that have been left out, but allowing the larger community to also have its fair share. The socio-environ screen, that's an interesting point that you have raised on that particular indicator, and it gets back to the larger question about how all these are being weighted, and I will report back on that. But it's the interplay between all the indicators. One of the reasons why the team put together not just water two indicators was because we were trying to have the interplay between all the indicators provide that social equity lens across the city. And I would happily go into greater detail or look into that socio-environ screen, because you've mentioned some interesting points that the team will actually investigate. But again, just to reiterate, this was meant as an equity lens that was lent to provide funding across the city while acknowledging the fundamental difficulty in our low to moderate income census tract.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. So a few comments I'd like to leave in this conversation. One, for starters, you know, everybody here, Ms. Hall, you know, our entire council, the city staff, none of what we are facing today is our fault. It's the fault of an economy that has 90% of the stock market value with less than 1% of the population. There should be enough for everybody who needs it. And this country certainly produces enough, and there's enough wealth for that. And so, again, I know that doesn't help us make a decision here, but I just think it's important to keep in mind that we're operating in a very, in a radically obtuse system where we have to make decisions with this much stuff when there's this much available. There's more than we need to get it to everybody who needs it. The other thing I would say is, I hope that folks can have some appreciation for doing what it means to do business in a historically disadvantaged neighborhood. And so, you know, I noted Mr. Bonner's example of the food truck. I'm going to claim him and say the food truck owner lives in the 8th district, and they were on Crenshaw. I'll bet you, if you talk to them, they would say having a business, even in Palms, is a much different experience than if they had stayed on Crenshaw Boulevard. Because their minimum wage worker in Palms might be a UCLA student. Their minimum wage worker in, on Crenshaw is likely to be a mother, a single mother with three kids, who doesn't have an extra minute to stay on the job and can't, you know, go on their laptop at night and fill out a PPP application for the business. And so I just want folks to have some sensitivity to that. I think council districts are a way of getting at that, just because we don't have better tools. And I think if we had better tools, we could do something better. Another thing that might be considered as a part of this and a part of our examination and, Ms. Hall, your work is just do heat maps. You know, heat maps of poverty, and if there are places where they happen to cross council districts, that we take a look at that. Because I think, you know, that could be the way where we address this. I would suggest to you, though, those, you know, our council districts are, they're pretty good. You know, Mr. Bonner and I have a border, and, you know, economically in my district, you can feel it the closer you get to the border with CD11. Like, it's the economy, the economic situation is very, very real. And so I'd offer those things to the conversation. I look forward to your report back, Ms. Hall, and further discussion on the matter.
And thank you, Councilman. May I just, thank you. I may I just add to that, that we, thank you for your thoughts on the heat map, because maybe I didn't express that we started this research and analysis right there with the heat map. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we started there, looking at the heat map of poverty and other indicators, and overlaid them. So we worked through this process, and I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Harris-Dawson. With that, Chair, I would like to recognize Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fine with doing this the way that we've laid out, but I just want to echo the concern of some of my colleagues that in my district, I don't think there are any areas of poverty. But there are areas that are very marginal in terms of the business community. If you look at Beverly Fairfax, for instance, I think the attitude when there was a lot of vandalism going on post George Floyd's terrible murder, there was a reaction, well, it's a wealthy district, who cares? But Beverly Fairfax has a lot of very marginal businesses owned by folks from other districts with much less wealth, who may have put their life savings and that of their relatives into a business that is eking out a marginal profit before COVID, before the impacts of the unrest. And it well may be constituents from CD8 that need the help, but they can't get it because they're in my district. So I love the idea that we're looking at this from an equity lens. I'm just concerned that by assuming that we go in the districts or census tracts with poverty, that we're catching the business owners that are not as well off and are struggling, I think may be a miss. So I think we do want to give some thought to that, how we catch the business owners who don't necessarily live in the community, aren't necessarily wealthy, but because they live in CD5, they're lumped in with a business that may be in Century City or Westwood Village or other areas where there's more neighboring wealth. It doesn't assume the wealth of the business is similar to that. In many cases, it's far from it. So I just think we should be aware of that as we look to try and capture folks that need the help through an equity lens.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Mr. Wesson?
Madam President and members, I'll be real brief. Members, the reality of the situation is, we got limited funds, and we have to take care of, or do the best that we can in the districts that are hardest hit. And then I think it's important that we look at a complete district like Mr. Harris-Dawson's and like Mr. Price's and other, like Mr. Sidiyo's. So that's basically all I have to say. We'd love to do more, but let us get the most bang for our buck. Let us put these resources where it is definitely needed the most. Thank you.
And may I just add to that? Thank you, Councilwoman Wesson. May I just want to reiterate that the funds are citywide, and while there is a lottery and weighting system, all of, the entire city will have access to these funds.
Mr. Blumenfeld?
Great, thank you. I mean, I certainly can, I can read the room, and I don't think that my amendment will pass, but so, but let me just say, and so maybe I'm going to change it to a report back in terms of getting some information about the geographic distribution after the fact, and to look into other ways besides political jurisdictions. Again, I want to emphasize, I'm excited about the equity lens. I do think that we need to get the funds to the regions where it is most needed. And the heat map idea is a great one, and it was the starting point of this, and that's how it should be done. But the political jurisdiction, I think, is a dangerous road to go down. And I also think that our districts are way too large to be making, to be lumping all of this together. A single district in Los Angeles is bigger in population than 99% of the cities in America, cities that have rich areas and poor areas and everything else. So just as I know that, you know, we wouldn't want to lump Pacoima and Van Nuys in with the supervisory district, we wouldn't want to cut the city in half arbitrarily and say, well, let's just say, we're going to give, we're going to wait whoever's on this half of the city versus this half of the city. It's a huge jurisdiction. We need to be more granular if we're going to really be effective in getting the funds to where there is the greatest need. And if we really are going to have an equity lens, we need to be more granular and less arbitrary than a political jurisdiction. So I really, I do think philosophically, it's a slippery slope with the political jurisdictions, and I hope this will not be a precedent. But I, again, the concept is there, the equity lens, I'm on board with, and I would just ask that we get a report back after the fact about the geographic distribution of this, and we get a report back on other ways, you know, less arbitrary, regional ways, maybe heat maps, to provide this kind of equity lens. And, you know, as I said, I do think there are plenty of districts where more of the businesses in those districts should be getting this aid than my own. That's not what I'm saying. But I just, again, I'm not going to repeat myself. So that's my motion. I'm not going to offer the original motion, but just for a report back.
Okay, Mr., thank you. I was going to ask for a second. So there's a, there's been a request made by Mr. Blumenfeld on a report back, and it's been seconded by Mr. Corian. Mr. Corian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld, for that, because I think that's an effective way to continue this dialogue and to have this program be informed by what everyone has said. We've had a pretty interesting discussion here, but I think what happens, what often happens in our council is, when we have these debates, sometimes we debate about what we think other people are saying, in fact, instead of what they actually are saying. And what I've heard today is not one single word said contrary to the idea that this program should be through an equity lens, that it should emphasize areas with concentrated poverty, that there is a difference between places with many census tracts that are suffering poverty compared to those areas with just a few. Every single member of this council who's spoken, I think, agrees with all of that. The only discussion item here is whether a politically drawn district is the right way to measure that. And I want to give just a couple of examples. CD14 includes Skid Row and the most valuable pieces of property in America, and it, within one council district, within a stone's throw of one another, actually. The old CD9, before the new ninth and before Mr. Price's arrival, before redistricting, CD9 included areas that had wealth in downtown. Many of those were lost to CD9 because of the horse trading of redistricting. Now, should the businesses in CD9 be disadvantaged because, one way or the other, because of the horse trading of redistricting? Of course not. No one here would agree that that's a good idea. So, Mr. Harris-Dawson, you mentioned that, you know, the districts are kind of rough approximations, and they're what we have. And that may be true, but I would suggest that when we get the report back, we also look at some other options, one of which was indicated, I think inadvertently, by Mr. Sidiyo, and that's zip codes. Let's look at zip codes. Let's look at opportunity zones. Let's look at Jedi zones. Let's look at former community redevelopment zones. These are all much better tools to use to measure concentrated poverty and historic disadvantage in communities than politically drawn council districts. My, I think my only point is, the world does not see our streets and our neighborhoods as council districts. It sees it as, people see areas as communities and neighborhoods, not as council districts. We see the world that way, but no one else does. So I would just, I think that the report back is a good solution. I think the heat maps are a good solution. I would just ask also, Ms. Hall, if you could look at opportunity zones, Jedi zones, former CRA zones, as other potential measures that would achieve the objective that we all want to achieve, which is focusing these resources on where they're needed the most. And I'll take that as a friendly amendment and accept it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Madam President. I think I will be brief. Supporting equity is easy, achieving it is difficult, and we have, and I think the report backs will help us further the discussion, and I welcome them. We've talked about equity a lot on this council. We've talked about it in the context of Vision Zero. We've talked about it in the context of cannabis. And I think this is actually the most nuanced and thoughtful conversation that we've had about it, and I think that's important. And I just want to particularly shout out and acknowledge the discussion that Mr. Harris-Dawson had with Ms. Hall. I think that that conversation about the impacts of compounded poverty was particularly effective and persuasive, and I wanted to thank you for teasing that out and contributing that to the discussion. That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Mr. Sidiyo?
Let me also applaud the conversation and note that I will be voting against the motion, that principally, I believe the leadership matters, and that there are distinctions with respect to all the council districts and resources that are aggregated and accumulated within those council districts, and that they matter. And because they matter, there are districts like mine where we are met with many challenges, and I have to be the person who marshals the resources of a district to help those in need in my district. need in my district. And so it does matter. It's, as I said, there was a conversation about, Mr. Harris-Dawson brought up about somebody, the minimum wage worker who could then get on their computer. In my district, 40% of them don't have access to Wi-Fi. And so, you know, it does matter. Redlining matters. The way the police treat you matters, whether or not there's a bank available and I can talk to a bank manager and work with them and help in a small bit. I know that when COVID first hit the district, I spoke to a lot of small business people. And I was working with one who was in a more resourced community and who was able to bypass and work with a bank and get the PPE immediately. I know there were others that could not access it, who had challenges with it. And so it, it, it does, it does matter. And that's a fact of, that's the political reality of this political conversation and this discussion. And therefore, I think that it's most appropriate to have this distinction of political boundary and that it should be a factor in favor of the disadvantaged and that they should be given an opportunity to have access to the resources for this critical moment. I think.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item as amended for a report back. Go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Are we voting on the amendment?
We're voting, we're voting on this item altogether as amended because, because there's a report back, a request for a report back.
Sadio, aye.
Thank you. Harris-Dawson?
Yes.
Kuretz?
Aye.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
13 ayes, one no. The item is adopted as amended. Madam President, would council like to recess the regular meeting and convene the special meeting?
Let's go ahead and recess our regular meeting and go into our special meeting at this time. Can you please call the roll?
Yes. Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin?
Bonin, here.
Buscaino?
Here.
Sadio?
Present.
Harris-Dawson?
Here.
Kuretz?
Here.
Krikorian?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Martinez?
Present.
O'Farrell?
Present.
Price?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rue?
Present.
Wesson?
Here.
14 members and a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up item number 30.
Item 30 is an item for which public hearing has been held. The committee report for item 30 has been submitted and posted online for council's consideration.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, would you like to speak on this item before I take public comment?
And public comment has been satisfied, I understand, but
According to our city attorney, we have to allow public comment.
We're in a special meeting, so we'll take public comment.
Great. That, that's terrific, too. Madam President, yes, I'd like to speak on this, and I want to thank you for scheduling it. And this is all about exploring, offering telecommuting incentives. Colleagues, tectonic shifts in human existence can provide opportunities to address longstanding societal and environmental issues and inequities. And COVID-19 is one such tectonic shift that we've all been affected by across the world. Unfortunately, to live in LA is to live in a city with a higher-than-average rate of air pollution that is hazardous to our health, especially for low-income communities and communities of color that experience disproportionate rates of environmental pollution. Sitting in single-person occupied vehicles for hours on end in traffic was a reality for too many of us before the pandemic struck. Early on, COVID-19 and the resulting stay-at-home orders gave us a brief glimpse into what our city and our air can look like with exponentially fewer cars on the road. People, for the first time, were claiming that they could see the mountains at a greater distance, and even the sea. The view corridors were all better. Of course, the air was so much cleaner. We can breathe better, we can see better, our overall health can be better. That is why I introduced an Earth Day motion back in April to look into possible incentives the city can offer to businesses who can continue to allow their employees to telecommute a certain percentage of their work after this emergency order is lifted. I recognize that telecommuting and incentivizing less driving does not solve climate change or completely fix our city's air pollution problem, but it can certainly go a long way. By asking the CLA, the CAO, the EWDD, the Office of Finance, and others to report on these incentives that the city can offer, we can come up with some possible options to help our residents breathe better and stay healthier. In addition, by asking the necessary departments to report back on how we can mitigate the effects of motorized carbon emissions, reduce gridlock, evaluate our traffic movement patterns, and enhance urban greening efforts, we can work together to keep our air cleaner and prioritize the health of our city's residents. So I look forward to hearing the public comment and asking for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Bonin?
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Welcome the motion. Wanted to provide a little context that a considerable amount of work, particularly by LA DOT, is already happening in this regard. A lot of the city's requirements and incentives are part of the city's transportation demand, transportation demand management ordinance. Metro also has one as well, and both of them are antiquated. Prior to COVID-19, a year or two ago, we initiated an effort both at Metro and at the city to update those ordinances. The two agencies, both the city and Metro, are doing so sort of on parallel tracks and should have draft ordinances available for the city to review and for Metro to review before the end of the year with an eye towards possible adoption in early 2021. So this motion is most timely because it certainly can inform that process. And I hope the process underway is one that will be able to deliver quickly some results for the intention of this motion. So absolutely necessary to get it done, and a lot in progress. And we should have something in just a couple of months to react to and, and move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take public comment. Mr. O'Farrell, did you want to speak again?
Oh, just going to say, thank you, Mr. Bonin. That's, that's all terrific. And I'm, I'm hopeful that this, this event, you know, this pandemic event that has happened, I'm hoping that we can also hear from AQMD and, and get some new data on what the air was like in those earlier weeks of the stay-at-home orders, because it was just markedly different. The entire spring season felt like nothing I've ever experienced in Los Angeles in my 38, almost 39 years here. So I, I think it's an opportunity, a once-in-a, you know, hopefully lifetime opportunity, to get new data from, from what happened and, and all that we experienced. So I'm really happy to hear the progress on existing efforts to, to reach, you know, new, new levels of clean air in Los Angeles.
Mr. Buscaino?
Just to piggyback on Mr. O'Farrell, on the AQMD ask, I'll be more than happy to facilitate that, Mitch, for you. Keep in mind that AQMD today offers incentives for telecommuting for businesses throughout our South Coast region. So be more than happy to facilitate that for you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Okay, let's go ahead and open up our lines. Madam Clerk, can you read in, read the call-in information?
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press the pound key. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID number. Let me repeat. Call 669-900-6833 and use meeting ID number 459-499-150 and then press pound. Press pound again to be, when prompted for participant ID number. When admitted into the meeting, press star nine to speak.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to take 10 minutes of public comment on this. Because this is a special meeting, there's no general public comment. You may speak on this item only for a total of one minute. So we can open the lines and start taking public comment.
Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on the only item that you're accepting comments on, this, this idea about the air quality. But I would point out that you read in a call-in number. The meeting ID number that you read in is not the one that I called. I called the one that's on the agenda. So that may be a problem you've created for yourselves. I don't know, maybe you'll take both. Anyway, getting to the point, yeah, I think it's great to incentivize people, including, I guess, small businesses, but isn't it really the employees who are being hammered regularly who should be protected, not just the small businesses? Is this another one of these, looks like a plan to kind of shunt some money to small businesses who can then allow people to work from home? But if they can allow people to work from home, aren't they saving significant amounts of money because they don't have to rent as much office space? And I don't know. I, I like the idea of cleaning up our commutes and everything. It's been incredible that there's less traffic. I think it's wonderful. I'm not as okay with hiring transportation companies to work for one group in a neighborhood like Carol Truistin did with Gibson Transportation, hashtag, and many of you did the same. And then he only rolls out the plan to a section of the community, not the remainder of Angelenos, who will be dramatically impacted by these transportation plans. And he does so with the help of a bunch of little helpers who are totally unethical in our community. And I don't think it's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Next speaker?
Before we do that, I believe the clerk wanted to correct an ID number for the call-in information. So let's just read that into the record.
Yes, apologies. The phone number is 669-254-5252. Meeting ID number is 160-535-8466. Press pound, press pound again, and press star nine to request to speak once admitted into the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the next caller.
Please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Please state your name.
Rob Quan.
You have one minute.
Yeah, this is a great idea and all, but it's kind of rich considering the council's hiding behind two confidential reports from the city attorney on real issues like the oil setback. Telecommuting doesn't really help you when you've got urban oil drilling happening in your backyard. And lastly, I just want to make a quick note that district-by-district weighting of inequity may not be perfect, but it's a valid factor.
Okay, so let's stick with item 30, please, Mr. Quan.
In no way discount the fact that wealthiest districts have half the unemployment rate, 30 times the gross receiv-
Okay, Mr. Quan, let's stick with this item.
Please state your name. You have one, one minute on item 30.
Thank you. I would like to point out first that it was very glaring that Mr. Farrell went all out of his way to say public comment has already been established. Why would he do that? You've told on yourself, Farrell. It gives, it gives your character-
I understand, Mr. Roses, but let's stick with this item.
To the city can offer businesses to continue to allow employees to telecommunicate to and from work. It doesn't say small businesses. It says businesses. This is another potential giveaway. I don't trust the LA City Council as far as I can spit, because you're all corrupt. This says businesses. This is potentially a huge giveaway to large businesses for, again, more campaign contribution. If it's done properly, yes, we do need to reduce traffic. But last week, you voted to, for the polluting-
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Let's move on to the next caller.
That's taken.
Please state your name. You have one minute on item 30. Please state your name. Please state your name. You have one minute on item 30.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm waiting for item number three.
No, this is, we're in our special meeting. There's only one item on this agenda, item number 30.
No, I'm sorry. That's not the item I wish to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just go ahead and take the next caller.
Please state your name. You have one minute on item 30.
Hello. I'm sorry, I was calling for the item number three on the agenda. Thank you.
Please state your name. You have one minute on item 30.
Hello? Hello?
Speaker, are you there? Apparently not.
Okay, that concludes our speakers for this item. Madam Clerk, seeing no other members on the queue, why don't we go ahead and vote on this item, item number 30. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield?
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin?
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino?
Aye.
Sadio?
Sadio, aye.
Harris-Dawson?
Yes.
Kuretz?
Yes.
Krikorian?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
O'Farrell?
Aye.
Price?
Aye.
Rodriguez?
Aye.
Rue?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
14 ayes. This item is adopted. Madam President, would you like the special meeting item to go forth with today?
Yes, without objection, that will be the order. Let's go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and convene our regular meeting. And can you tell me what's next, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, council has verbal motions.
How many do you have?
There are two.
Okay, can you please read those into the record?
Yes, the first motion has been introduced by Councilmember Harris-Dawson to be referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee. This moves that street vacation proceedings for 31st Street northerly of Jefferson Boulevard from Catalina Street to 250 feet easterly thereof be initiated. And the seconder?
Is there a second? I will second that. Next?
Thank you. The second motion to be referred to the Rules, Elections, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee has been introduced by Councilmember Rue. This instructs the city clerk to report to council on the feasibility of installing ballot drop boxes in city facilities to ensure voters have safe and easy access to cast their ballots, including security for Dropbox locations, and a process to ensure all ballots deposited are delivered to the county clerk's ballot-receiving location by the ballot submission deadline. And the seconder?
Second by, who's the second?
Blumenfield, second.
Mr. Blumenfield, the second. Mr. Blumenfield, the second. Any others? You just had two, right?
Correct.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion, and the moving clause is, I therefore move that the police department be directed to report on its various co-response units, including, but not limited to, the mental health, mental evaluation unit, system-wide mental assessment response teams, domestic abuse response teams, and homeless outreach and protective engagement teams. This report should include information on the number of officers assigned to these units, number of calls responded to annually, how they are dispatched, the qualifications, specialized training, length of service, and method of selection for officers assigned to these units, as well as incentives offered for assignment to one of these units.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Buscaino. Ms. Rodriguez, do you have any other motions?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krikorian? Mr. Krikorian?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. I do have a motion that I am co-presenting with Mr. Harris Dawson. And forgive me, but the moving clauses are a little lengthy. I therefore move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety to perform the following actions. One, continue the holds that it has in place on the projects identified in the indictments and plea agreements as Project C located at 940 South Hill Street and Project H located at 926 West James M. Wood Boulevard for a period not to exceed 45 days from the date of adoption of this motion, unless extended by further action of this council at a public meeting. And two, initiate holds on two other projects identified in the indictments and plea agreements as Project D located at 1020 South Figaro Street and Project M located at 520 South Mateo Street, or on any other projects identified in the indictments and plea agreements for a period not to exceed 45 days from the adoption of this motion, unless extended by further action of this council at a public meeting. I further move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety to initiate holds, not to exceed 20 days, on projects identified in any future indictments, plea agreements, or other documents made public by the Department of Justice or other prosecutorial agency, where the facts asserted in such documents present a reasonable likelihood of potential corruption or fraud, and to notify the city council within two business days of initiating such a hold for the purpose of affording the council at a public meeting the ability to extend the hold for a total number of days not to exceed 45 days from the initial department hold, unless further extended by council action at the public meeting. I further move that the council request that the city attorney submit to the council file assigned to this motion the indictments and plea agreements referenced herein and any other relevant background information so that appropriate evidence is available to the council and the public in consideration of such, in consideration of the requested holds on the projects.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. Can I get confirmation that Mr. Harris Dawson is a co-author to this motion?
I am offering such a confirmation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Krikorian, is there any other motions?
No, that's it, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two motions. The first is a resolution in support of a bill literally just introduced now in the state legislature. And the moving clauses, clauses now therefore be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 state legislative program support for AB 1659, Bloom et al., which will enact the Wildfire Prevention and Community Resilience Act of 2020 and increase safety from catastrophic wildfires, particularly among the city's hillside communities.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bonin. Next one, Mr. Corretz?
I move that subject to the approval of the mayor. $120 be transferred slash appropriated from the General City Purposes Fund, number 100-56, account number 0705, CD5 Community Services, to the General Services Fund, 100-40, account number 1070, salaries as needed, for services in connection with Council District 5 Special Recognition of International Overdose Day for the illumination of City Hall on Monday, 8/31/2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., is that Mr. O'Farrell? Okay, yes. All right, thank you, Mr. Corretz. Seeing no other members on the queue, are there any announcements?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Lee?
Just announcement that we're just moving back to ITGS Committee to 115.
Can you repeat your committee name one more time?
ITGS Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, for the record, those motions are posted and referred shortly after the council meeting, and the desk is clear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you, Madam President, for purposes of announcement. There is a major event this weekend. As I noted last week, the 50th commemoration of the August 29th, March 1970, which was a protest march against the war, the inequitable number of deaths that were occurring within the Chicano community. We were about 5% of the population at the time and closer to 25% of the fatalities of the Vietnam War. And then a series of other issues that pertain to social justice during the time, access to quality education, bilingual education, et cetera. And so there's going to be a commemoration with two concurrent events taking place in East Los Angeles. One, led by former Brown Beret, original Brown Beret, Carlos Montes. The new Brown Berets, led by the mothers who have been victimized by the deaths of the children at the hands of the Sheriff's Department, will be leading this march. And it'll be starting at Atlantic Park, which is in East Los Angeles, about two blocks east of Garfield High School on the corner of 6 and Atlantic Boulevard. People will gather at 10:00 AM. And at 11:30, people will walk over to Whittier and Atlantic and then proceed down to what was known as Laguna Park, now known as Parque Salazar. At Atlantic and Whittier, that march will meet a caravan of cars, vehicles, which will assemble at 9:00 AM and leave at 11:00, further east in Pico Rivera. And they will convene at Greg Road and Whittier Boulevard. And then that caravan, going about 10 miles an hour, will proceed from Pico Rivera through East Los Angeles, into East Los Angeles, and then into, and head over to the park. So they will go not only concurrently, but they will then go parallel. Half the street will be marching, half the street will be in the caravans. And they will be commemorating the same issues that took place in 1970. The challenges remain intense for the Latino community today. 7,000 children have been separated from their families. Our children are in cages. We don't have access to the media. We're underrepresented, represented at all. We're the greatest victims of COVID. We lose our children to police killings more than anyone. More of our children and our families are incarcerated or in detention camps. The challenges are immense, and therefore the response from the community will come on Saturday to make clear that this is not acceptable and that we continue to protest. But in addition to that, the good news is that from those protests, where many people have moved on to become important leaders, as you know, civic, political, and cultural leaders of our community, and they will also be in attendance. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the city. People are welcome. Peaceful marches led by mothers and families are welcomed on this Saturday, August 29th, 50 years from that historic event. I think.
Mr. Corretz?
Thank you, Madam President. International overdose awareness is observed during the August of each year, and a global event is held on August 31st. This month-long observation aims to raise awareness of overdose, reduce the stigma of substance use disorder. It also acknowledges the grief felt by families and friends who have lost loved ones or those who have suffered a permanent overdose injury. And my constituent Julie Shamos lost her 19-year-old son Tyler to a fentanyl overdose on October 21st, 2018, which was not something her family ever thought they would have to deal with. And to honor their children, Julie got together with another mother who also lost her son to an overdose and formed a nonprofit to try to prevent other families from going through what they did. Last year, they put on their first event in Los Angeles, to which over 200 people attended. As a result of COVID, they haven't been able to do it in person this year. Instead, they've collaborated with several other nonprofits and have come up with Light Our Country Purple. So this Monday, the 31st, City Hall will join other governments and organizations around the country and around the world and will be lit up purple in honor of International Overdose Awareness Day. And may their memories be a blessing.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. We're going to move on to adjournment motions. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn today's council meeting in the memory of Marietta Watkins. She was a proud Glassell Park resident that I knew for over 20 years. Marietta was born April 1st, 1933, in Port Angeles, Washington, where she was raised and educated. She attended Seattle Pacific University and majored in education. She then taught primary school in the state of Washington before moving to California and teaching in La Puente. Marietta was smart, involved, engaging, and committed to the community. For years, she and her partner Terry attended Glassell Park Improvement Association meetings, worked for their Neighborhood Watch, and until her death, Marietta participated in the weekly Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT team, the radio call-in. Aside from the GPIA, her two favorite organizations to support were retired teachers and the Sacred Heart Association. Marietta and her partner Teresa Chavez were together for 50 years and lived in Glassell Park for over 40 years. They were inseparable, always together. I literally never, ever saw them individual. They were always together everywhere. Terry said Marietta passed away just as she would have wanted, quietly, no fuss. Marietta was known for her walks through our neighborhood, concerns for others, and a lovely and wicked sense of humor. She was a constant presence, never said much, but when she did speak, she wasted no words. And so I have wonderful, fond memories of Marietta, as do most folks in Glassell Park who knew her all these years. And I wish the best for Terry and at this difficult time. And I'm happy that I got to share just a little bit about her life, and that was a life well-lived. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President. And members, I kindly ask that we adjourn today's memory in honor and memory of Justin Sumiel Law, 33-year-old brother of Jessica Law, who we all know is president of the Central City Association. Justin peacefully departed on August 19th, 2020, from this world due to complications arising from liver disease. He passed away just before his 34th birthday. He was born in Houston, Texas, on September 27th, 1986. Justin was a loving son, a fiercely loyal friend, and an exceptional games player. He was a bridge prodigy and poker enthusiast. And his love for bridge began at the age of eight years old, and he became the top professional player for the rest of his life. Partial list of his highest accomplishments include the Grand Nationals team in 2006. He took the silver medal in 2011 in the Bermuda Bowl. Three national pairs title, 2011, '12, and '17. Grand Life Master at age 25 at the time, was the youngest ever in 2012. According to his sister Jessica, Justin was a beautiful person, inside and out. His brilliance, a larger-than-life attitude, generosity, honesty, loyalty, and unmatched sincerity will always be missed and never forgotten. He enriched the lives of everyone around him, and he left us so too soon. He is survived by his fiancee Stephanie Scott, her son Aiden, parents Himant and Jan Law, sister Jessica, brother-in-law Luke O'Day, and niece, little beautiful Ira Jane O'Day. Justin, may he rest in peace. Our hearts go out to his entire family, friends, and all those who knew him. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I will ask that all members be added to this adjournment. Our hearts go out to Jessica and her entire family. May he rest in peace. Thank you for adjourned in his memory. Are there any adjournment motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.